Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee. Just first of all, to say thank you to everyone present for attending. And please, can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are turned to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from Town Hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. So, without further ado, I think we'll take introductions from our committee members. So, I'm councillor Ruth Milson, the chair of the Subcommittee. And then if I can pass round from councillor Holmshaw and take it around the room.
It's councillor Brian Holmshaw, Green Party councillor for Brumhill at Charravale, substituting for councillor Martin Phipps.
Councillor Abdi San-Mohammed for the First Part Board in Sheffield.
Lucy Davis, I'm the Chief Officer of Healthwatch Sheffield.
I'm councillor Kevin Oxley, councillor for Mossburn.
Councillor Anne Whitaker, councillor for West Echelstiel Ward, and I'm substituting for councillor Gail Smith.
And to my left here is Emily, I'd like to introduce myself.
Sorry, I'm Emily Stambrich, she is our Policy and Improvement Officer, supporting the committee today.
Thank you. Are there any apologies for absence?
Yes, Chair, we have apologies from councillor Gail Smith with councillor Anne Whitaker substituting, from councillor Martin Phipps with councillor Brian Holmshaw substituting, and from councillors Dondell, Mike Dribble and Anne Murphy.
Thank you. And are there any items for the exclusion of public or press?
No, Chair, not today.
Do any members wish to declare any interest in any of the items of business on the agenda today? No declarations of interest, thank you. And then, so we move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. And first of all, whether there are any matters arising from those minutes. Any members want to raise anything from that? Okay, in which case, if I could ask for a mover and seconder for the minutes so that we can agree that they're an accurate record of the last meeting, perhaps if that comes from members who were at the previous meeting. Councillor Mohammed, thank you. And councillor Oxley seconding. So we're agreed that these are an accurate record of the meeting of the 21st of June. Thank you, members. On to item six, public questions and petitions. And we have received some public questions, which Emily will detail to us.
And yes, we have had some public questions today from Michael Suter from Sheffield Save RNHS relating to the GP hubs that were on the agenda of your last meeting and will be on the agenda for your November meeting. So they're not related to the agenda today. We have sought and received a response from the ICB to the questions. They are very lengthy, so what we're proposing is that we circulate those to you and give a written response to the questioner and put them on the website so that they're publicly accessible. If everyone's happy for us to do that, that'll be probably early next week by the time it's all filtered through.
Thank you, Emily, that's great. Just a quick note about public questions. If members of the public do wish to submit questions to the meeting, there's a procedure outlined for that on the council website for this committee. So, I think we're on to item seven next. And just by way of a preamble to that, well, I'm going to get everyone to introduce themselves. We've got a whole raft of people who have kindly given up their time to come today. And then as a preamble to that, I think I'm going to ask a couple of members who have come to run through just a very brief overview of the sort of higher level quality assurance framework that's being developed and to set in context the reporting that we're going to hear from Sheffield Teaching Hospitals and from Sheffield Health and Social Care Foundation Trust. So if we can hear introductions from all these wonderful people who have come along.
Hi, I'm Dani Hides. I'm the Deputy Director of Quality for the South Yorkshire ICB in Sheffield.
Yeah, and I'm Alexis Chaplin, Director of Adult Health and Social Care in Sheffield City Council.
I'm Dr Jennifer Hill, Medical Director for Operations at Sheffield Teaching Hospitals.
Professor Chris Morley, Chief Nurse, Sheffield Teaching Hospitals.
Hello, I'm Andre Galimberti. I am Deputy Medical Director at Sheffield Teaching Hospitals and currently I am the Interim Clinical Director for Oestetrist Gynecology and Neonatology.
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Ramsay. I'm interim Midwifery Director at Sheffield Teaching Hospitals.
Good afternoon, I'm Sandy Carmen. I'm Assistant Chief Executive for Sheffield Teaching Hospitals.
Thank you all very much. And Alexis and Dani, if you're prepared to just give us a very brief overview of the work that you're doing on the Quality Assurance Framework, and as I say, that will set in context the other reports that we're going to hear. Thank you.
I thought it'd be worth just, I was asked if I could just bring the difference between what the current governance arrangements are from it formerly as being a CCG and then moving to an ICB, which should probably help. So I think the only major difference from moving to an integrated care board is that we do have a new board members and we have accountability sits with five different committees. That links to people and workforce, quality and performance. We have a finance committee, audit and risk, and a renumeration committee. Formerly, it would have been led by the governing body, which obviously was stood down as a CCG. But, and then the other slight difference is we would have had a Quality Assurance Committee held at place, held by Sheffield CCG. That is now being replaced by a Quality Performance Patient Involvement Experience Committee, which is attended by the whole of the South Yorkshire ICBS. I suppose what I just wanted to stress is that merging to the CCGs hasn't really diluted the focus of Sheffield. What we're clear is that primacy is of place and from a quality assurance perspective and patient safety perspective, that's what we ensure from a Sheffield perspective and then feed into the overall South Yorkshire ICB. Those individuals who are actively involved as a CCG in terms of overseeing quality at STH and Sheffield Health and Social Care still remain those individuals that oversee the care and quality, so it's maintained a level of continuity going forward. And I just wanted to highlight the, how we sort of work with STH. So in terms of accountability and due to the enhanced surveillance, the lead is NHS England. It's not Sheffield Place. The lead from a quality assurance perspective in terms of oversight will be NHS England. However, at place, we are an active member of the NHSE Quality Board with Sheffield Teaching Hospitals and with the Care Quality Commission. We're also an active member of the now South Yorkshire System Quality Group, which involves NHS England again and the South Yorkshire ICB Quality Leads. But at place for assurance, we still hold quality and monthly quality and contractual assurance meetings, which covers sort of patient safety, quality needs. It's not limited to, but it's CQC improvement plans, action shared learning around serious incidents, safeguarding, and we also cover staffing and workforce. Again, just to add the context in terms of oversight from a place perspective, we have agreed jointly to undertake visits with STH colleagues to the wards and across the units in terms of quality assurance and actually looking at in a live space. We've got regular one-to-ones, and our other chief nurses have got regular one-to-ones in with the director of midwifery and layers with the chief nurse at STH. And we have a regular quality assurance meeting, so I just wanted to give some context to what we maintain at place. We're also looking to develop a joint quality sort of review group or Quality Assurance Committee alongside the Sheffield City Council, and I think that's what Alexis is going to elaborate on.
So, thank you very much for the opportunity to come along today. And as Dani's talked about, is the, you know, the primacy of what we do at place is really important and hopefully a reassurance to the members. As highlighted in the previous committee, so to have a context setting, is the Health and Care Act 2022 introduced an assurance system for both adult social care and also for the integrated care systems that are emerging. And what that has meant is the Care Quality Commission, CQC, have been charged with ultimately implementing and developing that assurance system. And what that will really mean in practice is that the CQC will now look to undertake assurances in terms of adult social care services, but also on how systems are working at place and across a regional basis to work in an integrated way to improve population outcomes. And so, very much the local assured inspections from, if a better word, organisations, as well as how organisations are working together to improve population outcomes is going to be really important as we go into this new framework for assurances. So to that end, and to support our preparation locally, what we are taking forward is kind of three key areas of focus. Number one, a joined-up working group across Sheffield with kind of key officers across each of the organisations and including Healthwatch and the VCESE, to very much share that we are prepared and we've got a plan in place and we're very much focused on performance outcomes and quality, and we could evidence impact of what we do. The second aspect is to take very much that integrated kind of quality assurance approach. And currently, what we have is separate governance arrangements in adult social care and in health to oversee quality and performance. And what we're in a process of doing is looking at how we bring these together, so we take the integrated approach and very much think about through that joined-up approach is ultimately very much have that oversight and totality of the quality and the outcomes and the performance of health and care services across Sheffield. And then the third thing is, is ensure that people, as part of that, have that key focus on the experience of individuals and their family members and carers. And that we have total transparency, and as you all know, that's my absolute key thing, total transparency on how we are performing and how we are taking that forward. So for the people at Sheffield, that's really important. And, you know, very excited about these developments because I think that really brings us into a different sort of area and shift in gear in Sheffield. And, you know, and to that end, we've been working with colleagues in the committee system to have on the forward plan for the Health Scrutiny Committee as a regular updating with progress at implementing the integrated quality approach and also for preparations for the assurance framework, as well as on our performance and quality as a system to scrutiny as well. So we have that transparency, that opportunity for scrutiny through this committee as well. So hopefully that's helpful, it's a very brief overview. And I'm up for any questions.
That is very helpful, thank you both. I don't want to spend really any much time on questions because I'm sure all this will be coming back in other contexts as well in future meetings. So if members are happy to carry on to the next item, and if you do want to refer back to Dani and Alexis in the course of examining this next item, that's fine as well. So, right, item seven is Sheffield Teaching Hospitals CQC inspection and maternity update. We've asked specifically for a focus on maternity in this context. It was a very big report, we wanted to focus on something and we felt that in view of some comments that have perhaps been passed to members of this committee over time, we thought maternity was a particularly good area to look at, to try and get a full picture of where you're at with the CQC report and the action plan. So, over to you to give your report, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting us all to share with you today. So, Chris Morley and I will present the slides and then happy to sort of share questions between us afterwards, and happy to take those as we go or afterwards as your preference. So what I'm proposing to do is give you a little bit of scene setting, describe what happened after the inspection and the report arrived, the action plans that we've been developing, as you say, particularly focusing on maternity, and also describing progress that we've made so far. So just, and I'm quite sure you will know much of this, but just to kind of remind members of the purpose of the Care Quality Commission as an independent regulator of health and social care. And they inspect services with sort of questions in mind, are those services safe, effective, caring, responsive and well-led? And in their inspections, as you may or may not know, they do a number of things, they talk to staff and to patients, they walk on towards, they sit on wards and observe practice, and they review documentation, particularly written and electronic patient records and staff records, looking at their training, whether it's updated or not, and looking at policies and procedures to check that they are, oh, we seem to have lost vision, it's back in, to ensure that they are up to date. And then they rate individual services as described across those four headings and a whole organisation also receives a rating. So what happened? Well, just to kind of contextualise this, clearly, our first inspection to maternity services was in March 21, so 12 months into the pandemic. So just for context, we, I think we're quick to forget the pandemic when we're moving on to other things. And that unfortunately found some concerns and changed the rating of that unit from outstanding to inadequate. A further, almost year of the pandemic elapsed and we had a further inspection in October and November 21. And that inspection was of a number of services across both the northern and the central campuses, looking at urgent emergency care, medical and surgical services, our community inpatient services at Beach Hill, which is stroke rehabilitation, and back to maternity again. And that culminated in a report which arrived in April this year with a very lengthy report that I suspect many of you have delved and read. And that contained a number of 85 must-do requirements for the organisation and 26 should-do requirements. Under what's called a 29A warning notice, requiring significant improvements because of concerns by the 17th of July. And I'll come back to that reinspection point a little bit later. So what happened? I mean, I think it's very important to say at the outset that the organisation, top to bottom, took this incredibly seriously. For our leaders, for our middle managers and for our frontline staff, this was a real blow. I think they'd been through a terrific amount with pandemic and this felt very difficult. And very difficult also for our patients and their friends and relatives to be concerned that their service was as such. And I think we were all very, 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 took that very, very seriously. We clearly took a number of immediate actions and we developed very comprehensive plans. And I'm going to just give you a flavour of those, and I do realise you've had a paper giving you a little bit more detail. And the plans are being led by Kirsty Major, Chief Executive, with me and my colleague Medical Director David Black and Chris Morley, and overseen on a regular basis by the Board of Directors. And we're very careful to be focused in our response to the outcomes. This was a 230-plus page report and it would be quite easy to get lost in the long grass by providing a sort of line-by-line response to what was in that. So we looked quite carefully at it and tried to say, from those 85 must-dos and the themes in the 29 notices, what was that report telling us that we had to pay attention to? And we ended up with 17 outcomes that I'm going to share a little flavour of, that kind of covered the, really the essence of what we believe the report was saying to us. And you won't be able to read these 17 outcomes on this slide, I'm quite sure, although I think you have had the slides. But to say that what we tried to do was to take an improvement approach and say, this is the outcome we're trying to deliver, what actions should we take, initially three actions, and what metrics can we measure and monitor to see that we're going in the right direction? So if I take an example of, we have embedded evidence-based interventions to reduce falls, what have we done? Well, we've updated and improved our risk assessment to identify the people at risk of falls. Identifying them is clearly not enough, we need to do something. And then we've worked, for example, to improve access to walking aids for patients who come into the trust and have walking aids at home that might not be brought with them, and also prompted with our risk assessment staff to measure blood pressure when lying and standing, because that's a good measure worth taking, intervention possible to reduce the chance of a patient falling. So we've tried to take that, as I say, outcomes-based approach. And across these 17 themes, they broadly group into areas of concern around mental health, capacity and restraint, around individualising risk assessment for patients, be they falling or deterioration, management of medicines and hazardous substances, management of records, and then learning, reporting and learning from incidents. And then finally, a big theme around ensuring that the risks that we identify, that we act appropriately, respond and escalate from the ward area through to the board. So those are the kind of, the broad themes of those 17 outcomes. And we're a big organisation, as I'm sure you know, with 70-plus ward areas, so we had to take a focused approach. And we took an immediate action on sort of our 12 highest-risk wards. Those were wards that either the CQC had identified concerns or we had data to make us believe that we had concerns there, higher number of falls or particularly difficult staffing levels, for example. And we focused support and assessment on those wards in the early phase, moving on then to a further set of 12 wards and are recently identifying a third wave. And we've identified a team that Dani had referenced too, they've been accompanying a team of senior staff doing what we call quality support visits to really triangulate the work we're doing with those teams. Can we see in practice that it's making a difference? So can we go and check and see that we're seeing changes? We've got a compliance oversight group, which I'd share, which, sorry, moving on accidentally, which is trying to help us both monitor progress, ensuring that the actions we chose are having the desired effect, push us towards the outcome, and changing and moving to different ones if not. And then we're making absolutely certain at all levels of the organisation, there's reporting through to the executive, through our Quality Committee and to the Board of Directors. So I'm just going to hand over to Chris.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. And so, for the next part of the presentation, for the next part of the presentation, we're just going to go into a little bit of the detail of some of the work that we've been doing and focus on some particular areas, including maternity as part of that. So firstly, one of the things that we have introduced across the organisation are safety huddles. So these are on ward areas and they are short gatherings of the whole ward team. By the whole ward team, we mean members of the nursing team, there might be allied health professionals such as physiotherapists, speech and language therapists, depending on the particular ward. We would encourage housekeeping staff to be involved, medical staff to also take part. So it's a real cross-section of the ward team. And that team then spends five to 10 minutes looking at any particular concerns for patients on a number of specific headings which are documented there, such as patients at particular risk of falls or a patient who may have a particular mental health need. And the reason for including the whole team is that often aspects of this can be helped by that wider team. So if a housekeeper observes a patient at risk of falling trying to get up, they can perhaps get a nurse to assist the patient in the real time and prevent that fall. So that's the ethos. There's been lots of resources provided and training for staff. We are, as part of the quality support visits, undertaking observations of these huddles to make sure that they are sticking to the ethos. There is some ability to make them bespoke, so Jennifer and I recently witnessed one on the stroke ward. On the stroke ward, they didn't talk about every patient who might have swallowing difficulties because that would be quite normal, they pulled out those particular patients who had specific needs or were being followed for a specific reason. In order to make quality more of a conversation and more visible, more transparent, we have introduced the boards that are on screen on all our wards and across maternity as well. There are two different types of boards. The one to the left focuses more on information that might be helpful for particularly visitors, so who's in charge of the ward, where might you be able to go and get a drink, visiting times, those kind of issues. The one to the right is much more about quality and describes things such as the ward's record on pressure ulcers, how many days have they been without a patient having a pressure ulcer, how many days have they had without a patient having a fall, what's their infection control practice. So this is firstly for the staff, so they can see and be up to date with what's happening on their ward, see what the particular focuses are. It's also transparent for our patients and they can have a conversation about what they can do to help with some of these issues, because there is quite a lot that our visitors can do, particularly in things like preventing falls and collagen, nutrition and hydration. If you have seen the report, there was quite a lot of talk about staffing, probably focused mainly on nursing midwifery staff. We have been on a journey in terms of increasing numbers of nurses and midwives, which started back in 2019 and has been quite ambitious in its scale. At times, it has been disrupted by elements of the pandemic, but since last July, there are the equivalent of 400 additional nurses and midwives working on the wards or within the trust, including maternity service compared to the year previously. And that is really palpable now as you walk around the organisation in terms of nursing particularly. We are expecting new colleagues to join us in September, which is our annual outturn from the universities of newly qualified nurses and midwives, and there'll be about 160 colleagues joining us. We continue other types of recruitment, so we are still looking at international recruitment as a source of both nurses and more recently, midwives. And we're also developing new support roles and specific support roles, and I would particularly pull out there midwifery support workers. And if you wanted more detail on that, we'd be happy to answer any questions following the presentation. We've got a twice daily staffing meeting just to ensure that all areas are safely covered and we can redeploy staff if required to make sure that that is the case. So, in maternity in particular, we now have twice daily situation reports. These are based on the situation within the unit in terms of the number of women in the unit, the status of those women, how many women are in labour, how many women may be awaiting induction of labour, how many patients, how many ladies on the wards, any other issues. And that's triangulated against the staffing levels available on the day. And this allows response, rapid escalation. And increasingly, a part of the system working we're doing across South Yorkshire, it does allow a meaningful conversation with other units if there is a need either for us to look at moving women to other units or indeed whether we would be able to accept women from other units to provide them with the care required. We have planned versus actual staffing levels clearly documented in all areas, and I was in accident emergency this morning and that includes there, if you go in the waiting room, it tells you how many staff, nursing staff are on duty against how many we were expecting to be on duty. We've done a lot of work ensuring that staff are up to date with their mandatory trainings. This is training such as fire, infection control, movement and handling, which we'd expect most of our staff to do, and job-specific essential training. So that's training that's been identified as required for a specific area, so it won't be as universal. So a good example, for instance, would be maternity, where we've done a lot of work on CTG training, which is fetal monitoring training. You wouldn't expect that in many other parts of the hospital, so that's an example of job-specific training, but our performance on both of those areas now is around 90% of our staff being up to date. And we have specifically improved maternity training compliance for fetal monitoring, maternal monitoring and neonatal life support. So I'm just going to move on from staffing into talking about mental health, which again was a flavour of the report. And in mental health, we also encapsulate mental capacity, which as we know is slightly different, but just for ease, put it under the same heading. So we now have a combined mental capacity assessment and best interest decision-making form to try and make it easy for staff to understand the decisions that an individual would be able to make and those that they would need support with. There is a ward electronic patient board on every ward. So this is a board which displays information about patients for staff, it has a range of information about them and about their needs. And we mention on here a couple of times, new icons we've got. And in this case, we have an icon which would highlight any patient who would be subject of a deprivation of liberty safeguard. And the significance of that is, we need to make sure that that patient does not leave the ward unless there's clear governance arrangements around that. We have the mental capacity assessment forms printed on coloured paper, that makes it easy for staff to identify and see them if they need to access them. And our mental capacity assessment team are attending the safety huddles to raise awareness and support staff, and they've also been part of the quality support visits. Continuing with mental health, so during the pandemic, we had to step down quite a lot of our training, particularly face-to-face training, and we've stepped that back up, particularly for our security staff first in terms of restraint training. Our security staff have all had the first part of their training and they will be receiving their second part of their training during October. And we are also rolling out a plan for restraint training for frontline staff where we think that is required. that is required. That won't be universal, but there will be areas where we will need to deliver that. We have undertaken work on restricted interventions and we're reporting those in a way that allows us to see where that's taken place and make sure we can monitor its appropriateness and put in any additional support that is required. Again, we've got a new whiteboard icon to identify patients with mental health needs. So again, we can be aware of any particular risks they may have and also direct support to them. The trust has instigated training on mental health risk assessments to make sure that where these are required, staff know how to undertake them and also importantly know how to act on them. And there's particular guidance in place for the preparation of the cubicle for mental health patients who are thought of risk of self harm attending our emergency department. So I'm just going to move on to maternity now. So as I already identified, we have some additional midwives and support staff recruited, more newly qualified midwives joining in the autumn and further international recruitment over the next six months. We've done quite a lot of work on ensuring that mothers who require induction of labour are monitored closely and that includes an obstetrician monitoring all those mothers twice daily and taking steps to escalate any delays. And so we have a much clearer oversight now of women who need induced labour and their relative priority for induction. The labour ward assessment unit has undertaken some physical estate work to improve it. And as of Monday this week, we have introduced a new system to effectively triage women as they come through. And the new estate arrangements have certainly helped that. And we are seeing that increasingly we are able to assess women in the time we would want, within fifteen minutes. And then they are categorised into four different levels so that they can be subsequently seen in the correct timeframe. And that's work that's in progress, but certainly this week we've made significant steps in introducing the new system. So with the support of Andrea, so additional consulting cover will be provided to the labour ward assessment unit to improve the triage time and review time for mothers. And that will commence from January as we get some new colleagues joining us. We have a process called fresh eyes. This is for the monitoring of CTGs, which is fetal monitoring and is someone else to look at that monitor to make sure that they agree with the rating that's been given at that time. And we are regularly auditing that process to make sure that it is happening firstly and that secondly, it is happening correctly because that's as important. We've talked about staff training and you can see there that has improved up to ninety five point six percent compliance for fetal monitoring. I think it's particularly important. And alongside all the work that we've described here, there is a maternity improvement plan, which is looking at a whole range of work that we want to take forward over the next couple of years. We are prioritising that to do the things that we think improve safety first. And that does include induction of labour, the triage work and the fresh eyes and CTG work. But once we have those embedded, we have plans to take forward other elements of work to further improve the safety and experience of women. So I'll just hand back to Jennifer at that point.
Thanks, Chris. So this section, I just wanted to give you a bit more of a flavour about some of the work on the other sort of key lines of inquiry. But clearly the work here on safety is absolutely as relevant to maternity as it is in every other area of the organisation. So as I've described, we've done significant work on falls. I've signified some of that already, but one of the things we've done is make sure every ward area has a falls pack. And inside that falls pack is, are some coloured socks to easily identify patients at risk of falls. It sounds rather fundamental and slightly ridiculous, but actually absolutely makes it easy to identify those patients at risk of fall in a ward area. And also provides a patient booklet for patients and families to read tips and useful hints about how to reduce the risk of falling and a very simple guide to how to do the line standing blood pressure measurement correctly because that, although it sounds completely intuitive, it can be done wrongly. Around deteriorating patients, really important that we not only identify them but escalate them appropriately. And a number of ward areas where different medical teams are looking after patients, it can be quite difficult for the nurse to identify the right medical practitioner to call. So we have absolutely made this easier by ensuring our electronic whiteboards have a page number so that the correct member of medical staff who's covering for deteriorating patients that day is immediately visible. And that's being met very favourably by the nursing staff. Further elements of safety and the outcomes are each of these slides that these relate to are in the bottom right hand corner of the slide. So I mentioned the storage of hazardous substances and medicines. So we're doing spot checks and have found some practices that needed to be improved and have done work on that. We've made sure that all of our domestic staff have lockable trolleys that when they have these cleaning substances diluted out and about on the ward area, that they're locked away, inaccessible to patients who might be tempted to interfere with them. And made sure we have safe storage of the chemicals that live in the storage areas on the wards with lockable cupboards. In terms of records, we've done a lot of work with teams, again through the quality support visits, ensuring that notes are kept securely, particularly in ours when there are less staff around, but also during the day that we aren't leaving records visible for others to view that shouldn't be doing. And made sure that our audits are up to date, particularly our infection prevention and control, hand hygiene and mask wearing, which again is requires regular monitoring and is showing definite improvement. In terms of incidents, reporting and learning, there was some concern with the speed with which we were reporting incidents to what's called the national reporting and learning system. So we've amended our system so that the person who's reporting an incident on our, what's called a Daytech system, an electronic system to report any incident, is able to rate that incident immediately. And as soon as the line manager views it, they're clearly able to prioritise the ones that are deemed to have moderate or severe significance. Once they've been reviewed by the line manager, they're immediately uploaded. And we've seen a demonstrable reduction in the time that those are uploaded. And that therefore means we are absolutely sure those significant events have been reviewed by line manager in timely fashion. We have audited to make absolutely sure that our incident severity grading is accurate and if anything, we're probably on the cautious side and we're certainly not underestimating harm from the audits we've done so far. And we will continue with that on a sample of our incidents going forward. Communicating learning with a staff of almost eighteen thousand is a challenge. Not everybody has time to spend on emails, for example. So we've, as Chris described and showed a photograph of our ward quality boards, that's a really good opportunity for ward staff to be able to view those. And we had a lovely incident last week where one of the support workers on the ward described to our quality support team the very essence of a quality board and described, that's where you find out when things went wrong and what we've done to make it better, which I thought was absolutely fantastic. Maternity again are sharing and finding different ways with laser posters in their area and in their regular briefings to share learning for incidents there as well. Personalising care and making sure that we really ask patients what matters to them and record it is challenging. And it's challenging to analyse because the data, of course, is qualitative rather than quantitative. So we've amended our approach to this. We have dignity champions on all wards and a number of further champions. But we've also rolled out a training video with a QR code, which allows staff to look at the video and really understand the essence of asking a what matters to you question. And we're using that record of training as another way of monitoring whether we're accessing staff with understanding. We do however, have some good evidence of improvement in the documentation round offers of food and drink, particularly in A and E. We suspect it happens, but if it isn't written down, in theory it didn't happen. So we're being quite careful to monitor recording of those measures. And we have now an electronic, what's called intentional rounding. That's the system on the wards where the nurses will proactively at time intervals go around and check that patients have had a drink, if they need any help with mobility, if there are pressure areas or concerns, that we've done that in a proactive way rather than waiting if pain needs to be reassessed or pain care provided. In terms of well led, there were issues in the report about our taking action in response to risks. So we've embedded new process and Chris has described the twice daily situation report, which covers all areas in the organisation to ensure that staffing is escalated with risk associated, described if we have concerns about that twice a day. We've reviewed our risk recording process and absolutely ensured that risks within our departments or directorates are recorded on the risk register and again go onto a trust wide register for the recording of the highest risks. We have reviewed our fit and proper persons policy updated and audited that with satisfactory results. And we had what the CQC believed to be a slightly complex risk management system. And we've rationalised, simplified and launched a board assurance framework that is probably more accessible from their point of view. And that's been approved by the board. So how are we seeking support and oversight of what is a huge organisational plan? So we've described the quality support visits, which as you say, have been joined both by our staff, retired staff with oodles and years of experience and colleagues throughout the integrated care board, NHSSE. And that gives us fresh eyes, my side, to see the things that we perhaps stop noticing because we're looking at them all the time. So the external eyes are really helpful. As I described, we have a compliance oversight group to check that we're moving in the right direction with our outcomes, our actions and our metrics. And we have a monthly quality board, which Danny referenced, which has two parts. The first part is absolutely focused on maternity. And there's representatives there from the healthcare safety investigations branch who investigate a number of maternity incidents. As you may know, colleagues from the integrated care board, NHS England and the CQC. And there's a presentation from the maternity team with questions and answers and discussion with stakeholders. And the second half of the meeting covers the rest of the trust wide action plan. And we present an update on progress to that meeting on a monthly basis. We also have established in terms of maternity, an improvement board, which is chaired by Kirsten Major, chief executive and attended by the four of us on the bench here. To that meeting and to our board of directors comes a monthly maternity and neonatal safety report with a significant amount of quality data, staffing data, which gives a real insight into the progress being made and allows us to challenge and debate whether our concerns... Our maternity champion is non-executive member of the board, walks around the unit monthly with a chief nurse and is meeting regularly with the maternity voices partnership to really get that insight and feedback to see if the changes that we believe are happening are being felt on the receiving end. And the feedback from that seems to be giving us some very positive signs. And feedback is being actively sought from mothers who birth at the maternity wing. So drawing to a conclusion shortly, I think what I'm trying to display is that we are trying to drive all our actions to completion, taking an outcomes based approach, looking at our metrics to make sure they're going in the right direction and asking why not if they aren't, and identifying further actions if we haven't achieved our outcome but the actions we initially set out to do have been done. We continue with our quality support visits. We initially planned those for three months and have extended them for further three and are giving thought to how we maintain that level of ongoing scrutiny from somebody who isn't in the same goldfish bowl. And we're thinking about that. Moving to the last slide, I think here, just to say that I think what I've displayed to you in this presentation is that we've made good progress in several areas. We have had challenges, the further waves of COVID have made progress in many areas difficult, but we are trying where we identify challenges to address those and enable movement where we can. As I described, we've tried to focus on our highest risk areas initially and ensure that we embed the change before we sort of scale and spread to the rest of a very large organisation and share what we're learning from those quality support visits with the team leaders, matrons, et cetera, on a weekly basis to give that real time feedback, both to ward teams at the time and then regularly with the team leaders. So I'll stop there and very happy for my colleagues to take questions as you wish. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Very comprehensive report. Thank you. Really appreciate that. So we'll take questions from members now. And I've seen up to some and then Brian and then Steve, we'll take you three first.
Thank you. And thank you for the report. That was really comprehensive and really informative to hear about what's happened since the inspection. I think I've got a number of questions relating to staffing, some about leadership and then about diversity as well. So in relation to staffing, it's good news that you've recruited additional midwives and nurses. What are we going to do about retention? Because this is where I hear anecdotally that there's a big issue, that once you've got the staff in because of the levels of stress that's involved in the workplace, the huge amounts of pressures that are involved there. And often at times, because you're going through this process now of improvement, additional work that's needed there. What are we doing to actually ensure that we retain staff and support them? In that question as well, are we being clear about the split between midwives and nurses? Are we making sure that they're separate numbers when we're counting those numbers? In relation to management, when I read the report, it was clear that this was, there was a disparity between what management believed to be happening and what was happening on the ground and the connection between the two. How are we ensuring, I know, I mean, it's good to hear that you've got champions that are going through the boards and feeding that information back. What are we doing in terms of making sure that the culture in the organisation is about receiving the honest feedback that sometimes we may not want to hear, but is about improving things on the ground, patient experience and things that happen in practice? And how does that happen? How does that filter downwards to the staff? So how is communication from leadership going down to the wards? And for people who are working on the frontline to understand what management are doing, is there practical things that are happening there? Because anecdotally as well, I hear from people that work in the NHS that there is that disparity between what's going on up there and we don't generally hear about what's happening and things that are happening on a day to day basis in the wards. And then in relation to leadership as well, I have seen in the report and, you know, I've seen from the people that we have with us today, that there's a lot of interim people in leadership and that creates questions in relation to stability and what that means for staff on the wards as well about, you know, how long have we got these managers for? And are they going to be with us for a short period? Will they be leaving? So again, that's a key question, I think, in terms of what's going to happen going forward. Are we going to make sure that we've got management in those positions for a fixed period? And I think the final question was in relation to diversity. So the inspector comments that, you know, you've improved from the previous inspection but recognised actually there was still work that needs to be done in that area and commented on the fact that it wasn't really identified as a specific concern in terms of ensuring that people on the executive board reflected the patients, the staff, the city as a whole. So what's been done about that particular area? And I think just the final point in overview, sometimes we can have, you know, all the reports in the world and all the action plans in the world, but the reality is, is how that's going to be implemented and how that sort of feels to staff and to patients in terms of change of culture. So how are we ensuring that the, I mean, when you're fed back towards the end, you did say that you have an external scrutiny, which is really welcomed. How are we ensuring that patient scrutiny is there as well? I know that Health Watch has that position in Sheffield, but how is that relationship going to be developed so that people, you know, some of the responses that individuals, patients had fed into the report was quite critical? So how are we making sure that that's not lost amongst all the action plans and the strategic plans that we've got going forward? Thank you.
I think we'll take answers to those questions before we move on to cancer home shores questions, if that's all right.
Thank you very much. Really good sets of questions. So I'm going to start, but I will probably navigate to colleagues as we go through. So I think retention first of all, so it's a really key aspect of what we're trying to do. So first of all, I was just looking at this over the weekend. So as a trust, we are the eighth best trust retaining nurses in the NHS out of two hundred and fifteen trusts. But that, you know, doesn't make us complacent because, you know, we still want to do more and make sure that we do retain staff. So I'll just talk about probably three things that we do at different stages of people's careers. So the first thing, we're very focused on those nurses and midwives that start with us in September because it is a critical point of someone's journey into the health service. Unfortunately, over the last few years, there's a growing trend nationally of registrants qualifying and then stopping practising. And clearly we don't want that to happen in Sheffield. So we have a preceptorship programme, which is a structured programme for the first year to eighteen months that someone starts with us in the trust, which they will work through. They will have sessions in our learning development department, but they will also have a mentor at ward or department level to work with them through to a point of competence. at ward or department level to work with them through to a point of competence. Slightly different in nursing and midwifery, obviously, there's slightly different arrangements, but they are similar and Laura would be well placed if you wanted to ask more about preceptorship in midwifery. So that's certainly something we're doing for the early career nursing midwives. As people move into kind of the middle of their career, often when they've found their feet, they begin to want a different challenge. And so we have a number of opportunities that we can offer people. So as a large trust, we are able to, there are often a number of comments that are ongoing that people might want to try, acting up arrangements that are sometimes available. If someone's gone on maternity leave, we might be able to act someone up. So those arrangements are there. We have a diversity of roles. So there's research, there's management, there's advanced practice, there's specialist nursing, so people can go into those. So I think that helps us retain staff. And then we have a transfer register. So what this is, rather than people having to apply for a job in another specialty, if they already work for us, we know them. And so if they want to go somewhere else and there is an opportunity there, we can arrange that to transfer across rather than having to apply. And that's, again, really popular and lots of our teams have enjoyed that. And for instance, nurses have worked in the community, come into the hospital and then gone back to the community and vice versa. So it's worked really well. And then the final thing about retention is those nurses towards the end of their career, we support flexible retirement and we see people often taking their pensions and coming back and working for us either in the same role or a different role. What's been really popular for us over the last 18 months is quite a lot of our nurses and midwives at the end of their careers have chosen actually to go and work for us in our vaccine centre where we've been delivering COVID vaccines. That's worked really well in terms of retention as well. So absolutely, we're focused on it. We are further developing our retention plans because we recognise just how important that is alongside the hard work it's taken to recruitment of as we have. So, thank you. So now I'm going to hand the next question over to Laura, which is about midwives and nurses and how we use nurses in the maternity unit. That's all right, Laura?
Thank you for that question. I think it's a really valuable, pertinent question. And the way we use and skill mix our workforce, particularly in maternity services, is incredibly key to promoting safety and quality. So we're currently undertaking, well, it's actually just finished, a review of Birthrate Plus full assessment. So Birthrate Plus is the workforce tool, the only maternity workforce tool that's accredited by NICE, that's the National Institute of Clinical Excellence. And so we've come to the end of that and it gives us advice and recommendations about how we should staff our areas, whether that be labour wards, whether that be the wards, community, all areas of maternity services. So it's recommended by Birthrate Plus that we can skill mix our maternity workforce with the use of nurses, registered nurses. However, they cannot be a substitute for midwives. Midwives can do, midwives should do what only midwives can do. And obviously, there's obviously a legal framework to that as well, which we all understand. But registered nurses from last year have actually added significant value and have promoted safe care at the Jessup Wing. And we are currently looking at how we can capitalise further on that in the promotion of safety of mothers and babies. So nurses obviously can do lots of things like observations and like we called something like our observations and escalation are called MUSE, which are obviously maternity escalation. And nurses can add value to postnatal areas and advanced obstetric care areas by being supported by midwives, but they can't act and replace a midwife. They can be used to enhance the safety and the care of mothers and babies. So we're very careful about how we can do that. In the postnatal areas, Birthrate Plus recommend that up to 25% of postnatal care can be delivered by a non-midwife. And that could be an upskilled maternity support worker, a band three, or a nurse. And there is some national work being undertaken at the moment about how registered nurses can support the maternity workforce because nationally, there is a national shortage of midwives. So we're all fishing in the same pond, if you like. So we at Jessup Wing want to make Jessup Wing the most attractive place to work. And we've implemented, we've got a new pastoral support recruitment and retention role that we advertise and recruited to recently, and they start next week. And we've just recruited to a fetal surveillance matron role, which is one of the first in England. And we're really looking forward to that person starting in November. And that offers us the advantage of being able to really sort of drive at pace the fetal monitoring and fetal surveillance agenda. And people are starting to look at the way we are delivering our services to women and also how we're looking after our staff. So we've got lots of plans for engagement for our staff and having them work as a team together and not working in silos, seeing themselves as a team, maternity support workers, medical, nursing and midwifery. So, yeah, so we've got lots of plans. And through the maternity improvement programme, which we're launching, we are looking at engaging all frontline staff, everybody who provides maternity care in some of the changes that we're looking at proposing, starting from the bottom up, really listening, hearing, having, promoting a sort of a culture of psychological safety and civility, which we know contributes hugely to safety of mothers and babies. Yeah, I could go on.
Yeah. We'll stop there. Yeah.
So the next question, I think, was around kind of getting honest feedback, particularly from staff. I think it's not easy. The number of initiatives we have been doing over the last 12 to 18 months, Kirsten Major, Chief Executive, has an all-staff question and answer, short briefing followed by questions. And we have had hundreds of folk join that with questions that can either be sent anonymously and beforehand or with names attached, either way, and in the meeting, either in the chat of the online meeting or asked questions at the time. And those have been, I think, really well received with some really good questions. We've tried to share what we're doing around CQC and COVID and various other things, but also had plenty of opportunity for questions. And we've had some tough questions there, I think it's fair to say, and some feedback, you know, not all of which we enjoyed, but we need to hear it. We've also run Kirsten and the medical directors a number of all consultants meetings as well to do exactly the same thing with questions and answers. So we try many ways of doing that. We also have, you know, we have 27 directorate teams, sort of middle management leaders of their own teams who are absolutely, do, are expected to and do regularly engage with, listen, brief, share. So I think it's many times at many levels. I don't think we can listen and communicate enough, but we are trying to do, you know, as much as we can to hear what it really feels like for the staff at all levels.
Yeah, just to build on that, one of the things that we had to stop doing, but was obviously as a board, it was difficult to get people out during the pandemic. But since the pandemic, we've started a programme out and about visits. So these are visits involving an executive director such as myself or Jennifer, a non-executive director and one of our governors. And we will go to areas and spend a couple of hours there with the staff, looking at what they do, listening to them and getting their feedback. I did one last Friday with our perfusionist, which was Sean Cardiac. Specifically on maternity, you've already heard myself and Roz Rowton, who's the non-executive maternity champion, do monthly walk rounds. We go into the department and we don't get marked, we go off on our own and we go and find staff and we talk to them and get their feedback as much as possible. And because the maternity unit is just behind my office, I think Laura and Andrea have heard of me popping across every time something happens, like this week when I went to see the new system. So we are trying to get in there, recognising that that is quite limited because that's one area and there's 18,000 staff. So all the other methods are really important. So we do try and embrace that culture. I think the other thing that was probably in there was patient experience. We've heard maternity about the work of maternity voices partnership. We are refreshing our approach to patient experience generally. We do have a patient first group, which is a group of patients which advises about our pathways and our work. But I think there's more we can build on there, particularly in partnership with Health Watch and others. So I think there is the opportunity to do more on patient experience. We have lots of opportunities for patients to feed back, but not necessarily for us to draw on their experience in the same way we do with the maternity voices partnership. So I think that's something that we'll be looking to build as we go forward from where we are now. So probably hope that's done justice to that question.
I guess the only other bit I would put in, I think through the vaccination programme, we had the opportunity to engage with a number of community groups that we hadn't historically listened to and heard from when we're able to do slightly different things, you know, pop up vaccine clinics in parts of the city where vaccination levels were very low. So I think really keen to kind of continue to use those networks that we've developed to hear from groups of the community that we perhaps haven't historically heard from or our standard way of seeking feedback and proactively hearing what it's like to receive the service. We can do a bit better, so keen to do that as well. Thanks.
So in terms of leadership, so I can absolutely understand with the field you've got today, why it would look like we have lots of interims and there's a specific set of circumstances around maternity which probably aren't appropriate to go into here, which is why we've got grateful for having Andrea and Laura with us. But out of a leadership community of probably about 90 of 100, if you take those 27 leadership teams, I think we've probably got less than five or 10 interims, the rest are all permanent posts. So it is an unusual situation, a specific set of circumstances in this service at the moment. As I say, we are very grateful for both Andrea and Laura for their help at this time, but there will be plans to embed, to leadership that will be enjoying. But it is an unusual thing, it's not something we do very commonly. So finally, Sandy, I was going to, in terms of diversity, I just wondered if you wanted to start, there was a particular question about the board, I think, and then I didn't know if you wanted to build on some of the other work we're doing because you're probably as well placed as the rest of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. So I think we've probably covered a lot of what I was going to cover, but from an equality, diversity and inclusion perspective, the trust as a whole has a very clear workschae run that's led by our chief executive. We have a strategy and an EDA board as well as a number of staff groups that almost in effect ensure that we're supporting our staff with protected characters. So we have an LGTQ plus group, we have a group for colleagues with disabilities, for example. In terms of ensuring that our board effectively represents the communities that we serve, for me, I feel like that's a piece of work in progress. We're really keen when we're advertising that we ensure we're not using language that sort of puts people off, you know, applying for the jobs. We're keen to support non-traditional career routes. We don't just want individuals that have had a set career route. We ensure that any panels are diverse in terms of panels that we use for the interviews, but also that those individuals have had appropriate training, whether that's unconscious bias, for example. So we try to mitigate against any sort of bias or concerns in that process. I would say it is work in progress, but it is something we're very excited on and continue to work on. Thank you. I don't think I had anything else to add from what you've covered. Thank you.
I think that covered all of councillor Harris' questions. Thank you. Councillor Holmes.
Thank you, Chair. I've got two questions. One is kind of on resources and how you use them, but also I've got a second one, which is a little bit more complex, which is about gathering maternity feedback, which we have covered a little already. So in terms of the more straightforward one, it's about the falls pack. The sense I get is that, and I may be wrong, is this is used by the patient. Is that correct? In which case, how do they know it exists? So that's that first question there, if you want to answer that one.
So shall I start? Chris will correct me if I go wrong. So the first step in this process is to risk assess a patient, to find out if they're a patient who is at risk of falling. If you were an elderly person who came in and were deemed to be at risk of falling, that risk assessment would prompt the nurses to do a number of things. One of those would be get a falls pack out. That contains a pair of coloured socks, which the patient would be offered and asked to wear, not forced to wear, but asked to wear. It would contain a leaflet that the patient would be given, which would describe things they could do to reduce their chance of falling. And the falls risk assessment prompts that higher-risk patient for the nurse to think, I need to do their line standing blood pressure. And inside that falls pack is a little reminder of how to do that accurately. So it's the nurse part in the ward who's driven to make the next steps. Hopefully, that's clear.
That's fine. Yeah, it was, I didn't want something that's going to be sat there, not used. It's proactive. That's what you're doing. Okay. I understand that one. Okay, on the second one, we've had a mention of honest feedback here, and that's always going to be a problem for all sorts of different services, councils as well as everyone else. So on the gathering of that, is there a role for, well, whose role is it? Is there a role for maternity champion there? Are they going to stay examine everything that's happening within the four walls of the hospital? Or are they going to reach outside a little bit further and gather information from, for example, mothers and families who've gone through the birth experience and are at home? So is there going to be a role there for gathering information there, where people have perhaps had a little more time to reflect on the hospital experience? But also the home birth experience as well, how does that fit in?
Yeah, really, a really good point. And so obviously, we have the traditional mechanisms that are in place in all NHS organisations using the friends and family test. And obviously, that is in place and has been in place for many years. However, the national view is that, and obviously from Better Births, which was published in 2015, is that all organisations providing maternity services should have a maternity voice partnership group, which we do have in place and actually have progressed hugely in the last, in several months. So these are actively women and families, so it's not just women, it's grandparents, dads and anybody else that's used our services fairly recently, who are involved in collaboration in development of our maternity services. So we collaborate with our maternity voice partnership. They're not just there, and they are there to obviously seek the feedback from mothers and families, but they're actually there to co-produce and collaborate in the development of services. So we have a monthly meeting with our maternity voice partnership. Chris and I have recently championed getting additional funding from, you know, for both of our chairs because we have an extensive programme of co-production that our maternity voice partnership group have done with our senior midwifery team about how we are going to transition and move through our improvement journey. So they're involved in our maternity improvement plan, they're involved, they attend our governance meetings, and they also have invited them recently onto our panels for recruitment. So I really feel confident that women and families have a say in the services that we provide and also a right of reply. You know, so co-production for me is just key to everything that we do in maternity services. And if we get it right there and produce services around families and women, we're probably going to not have as many issues in terms of feedback. And obviously, complaints and incidents feed into that as well, but they are our partners. And that's the position that we're in and that we want to be in.
In terms of complaints, so we have recently centralised our management of complaints. They used to be managed within the maternity department, so to speak. And now moving it back into central has allowed us to be part of the trust in that respect, which I think is a step forward, not just because of the quality of the responses that we can issue, but there's more trust oversight on the level of complaints and then the feedback directly to the triumvirate at the approval level before they go back to the trust so that the triumvirate, as myself and Laura and our operations director, have an oversight of what actually happens. So we can then decide what to feedback, so we get the proper sense of what type of complaints are coming through and if there's things and wider concerns that the complaints itself could be signifying.
Thank you. If I can just make a comment. It doesn't come out in the slides, this kind of idea of co-production, you know, all this really good work that you're doing. So I hadn't spotted that, so that's why I was asking the question about. It didn't seem to be there.
I'm happy to wax lyrical, but you probably all need to go home for your tea at some point, but thank you.
Thank you very much. I think councillor Ares, I saw your hand, and then councillor Oxley.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thanks for a very comprehensive presentation and I appreciate that, given the, you know, the bullet points that you had to touch on at the surface of some of the issues. So I've got, I just wondered whether you could just flesh out a couple of the specifics, what the issues were and the actions. And that was on two of the bullet points that, I mean, I could go on, but it would be... be here all day. Early detection of deteriorating patients was on one slide, and an issue with delivering personalised care, what matters to you on, I think it was the same slide or the next slide, I think that was. That's the first part of my question. The other question was a more generalised thing, I suppose it's a gift of hindsight question really, which we all love to have. What issues were expected, you know, from the report, the inspection report, and what issues actually came out of the blue?
So I'll start, if that's all right. So I guess, to be clear, deterioration is multifaceted. So the first thing we have to do is monitor people regularly enough so that we detect when they are beginning to deteriorate. So we need to be sure they are being monitored, and the most risky patients, when they arrive in the organisation, are monitored much more regularly than those who appear well, stating the obvious, I think, but it's important, because I think the first step was for us to be sure from our audits and our checks that our patients are being monitored at the intervals that they should have been according to our level of risk and worry about them. Then the next question is that person doing the monitoring, when a score level goes up and we have a score according to the blood pressure, temperature, oxygen level, et cetera, are they escalating that to somebody more senior saying, I need some help here, I need this person to be reviewed? And then is the person who comes to see them responding appropriately? And there are a whole load of ways we can approach that. So one thing I described was making it really easy for the nurse to identify the doctor, usually a doctor, sometimes a nurse practitioner, to come and review that person on deterioration. But there's another whole load of work behind that, which is things like ensuring that our nurses and medics and others are skilled to know what deterioration looks like, the training is adequate, so we've revamped our training packages, we've revamped our deteriorating patient tools, which prompt you to do the right thing and the right tests at different points, and we're monitoring that alongside what are our incidents and so forth telling us. So there's a deteriorating patient committee, believe it or not, which is doing all those things, looking to see whether we're recognising, escalating and responding appropriately, ensuring people are trained and that we're monitoring to see that we're doing it. And some of our electronic tools are facilitating us to do that better. Does that, hopefully, fleshes out a little bit more of what I was getting at. And I think one of the things that was highlighted in the report was that it was not clear to the CQC that we were reliably and consistently responding to deterioration, I think that was the way they described it. So I think what we're trying to do is be absolutely clear with the work that we're doing, that our staff are trained to so do and are detecting and responding appropriately, and that's what we're, with the direction we are going. Okay? I'll hand to you for the next question.
Yes, so personalised care, so I think, so one of the things that we're currently in the process of doing is procuring an electronic patient record, and that, all being well, will be in place and in use in May 2024, so quite a long timeline. Our current systems don't always make it easy for our teams, particularly our nursing teams, to describe the care of an individual in a personalised way. It can be quite easy to almost describe it as, you know, a patient who's had a fractured hip and what's that like. And so what we've been doing is encouraging our teams to firstly ask what matters to the patient, and you might think, well, that's kind of straightforward and would be obvious, they want to get better. And sometimes that is what they will say, often it will be, but other times they have things on their mind that you might not know about, and that question can sometimes flesh that out. It could be, actually, I'm really worried about my wife, you know, she's at home, she's not as well as you might think she is, or it might be another worry. So we want to get that, and then we want to include those in the plans and describe them so everyone's clear on them, because if that is a concern, we might be able to refer to appropriate colleagues. Or it may be that someone says, well, yes, I am worried about my breathing I've come in with, but actually I've had this lump for a little while that I'd quite like to talk to someone about now, so we can make sure that's addressed by the right professional. So it's about that element of just trying to really not assume what's important to someone, but understand it and then reflect it in their care plans. And we're hoping with the electronic patient record, we'll be able to do that in a much more consistent way, that it'll be much more straightforward to capture that and to reflect it in a way that makes it accessible for all our staff. So the second question, I think, was what was expected and what came out of the blue? So I think it's worth saying, in terms of the, both inspections, the inspections themselves weren't expected. So we weren't told we were going to get an inspection. What happens is, on a day, the chief executive is phoned or contacted at six o'clock in the morning and told that inspectors will be arriving on site by eight o'clock. So we didn't know they were coming. But in terms of what came from the reports, certainly we weren't surprised that there was comments about staffing, there was comments about our digital infrastructure, particularly our electronic patient record, we weren't surprised about that. And some of the other areas, we recognised that having been through the experience we'd been through as a health system, there was lots of work that we needed to do on our systems and processes to get them back up to speed out of the pandemic, particularly things like training, but lots of other things as well. Our whole way of working has stopped. In terms of what came a bit out of the blue, I suppose the amount of which they were able to highlight differences in different areas, so they did see some areas where there was really good practice but not always replicated. And that's why a lot of the work that you will have seen is about saying, we're taking this and we're going to apply it across the organisation. So safety huddles were done in some places as well, we're now doing that across the organisation, trying to replicate that, same with the boards. So that's kind of what we've taken from that. But as I say, we weren't expecting the inspection, so it made it difficult to know what we've kind of, we didn't, in previous inspection regimes, they've told you to come in and ask you to self-assess yourself, which would have given you the better opportunity to go, oh, that's a surprise, because that's different, that wasn't apparent this time, so we hadn't had that preparation. Thank you.
Thank you. We're slightly running towards the end of our time for this item, aiming to end around half three, so more questions still to come, but I'm going to ask you to go into third gear on answering, if that's all right. Councillor Oxley.
Thank you very much for that. I suppose my question is, we're always looking for continuous improvement in our services. So how are we and how do we benchmark our services with those within other trusts? In terms of, are you confident that we, as a body, we are picking up the best practice that is put in place elsewhere and that we've got mechanism to pick those up and implement them in our services?
So I'll start, I'm sure Chris will come in. We've got a number of opportunities, I'll answer the second one first, I suppose, to share practice across either within South Yorkshire, the providers here, the medical directors, the chief nurses and a number of other executives meet regularly to discuss knotty issues, share good practice, make sure that, you know, that we standardise as much as possible where it's appropriate to so do. On a national stage, we have a group called the Shelford Hospital Trust, which is a bit like the Russell Group of Universities, who get together, and again during Covid, that was incredibly valuable to share learning and experience and regularly meeting with the sort of medical, national medical director and the national chief nurse, et cetera. So that's a really useful way to share good practice. And in terms of benchmarking, there's loads of data, absolutely masses of it. There's something called Public View, which is a company that do a lot of data monitoring, and we do a lot of comparing and contrasting and using that as opportunities. And only recently, we were describing to our quality committee how we'd been looking really carefully at other people's reports around learning from deaths, for example, and we'd scanned some of the other organisations, found Cambridge's was particularly good. That's really helpful, we'll take that learning. And a number of executives attend meetings in other organisations to try and just really glean those best practices, because we don't want to be always reinventing the wheel when other people have done a lot of stuff already. So I thought, suppose I'd start with that, I'm sure Chris won't.
Yeah, brief in light of time, but the only thing I'd add, I was able to say earlier that we were the eighth best retention with thirty-fifth lowest vacancy for nurses. That's from a website called The Model Hospital, that has lots of metrics around lots of different things. The other thing we have is something called Girth, Getting It Right First Time, which is a series of visits where people will come to the organisation, they'll look at a service like vascular, and they'll say, you're doing really well on day cases, but your surgical intervention rate for that is a bit high. And so there is lots of information available, and we are trying to make sure we use that and work with it. So, thank you.
I've got some questions from Lucy Davis, our Health Watch representative.
Thank you. I know we're running out of time, and I have got a few questions, so I'm going to try and make them as snappy as I can. So the first one relates to maternity, and we know that nationally and in South Yorkshire, there is huge inequality in terms of outcomes for Black and Asian women, particularly accessing maternity services. So I was just a little bit surprised not to see some focus on that area of equality in the slides that you brought, but I do appreciate that it was a very, sort of, it was a high-level overview of the actions that you've been taking. So, but within that, I had a sort of specific question about how are you using data? So you mentioned the maternity board that met regularly to kind of make sure that things were keeping on track. Does the data that that board sees drill down into that, sort of differentials around different experiences and outcomes for different ethnic groups accessing the service? Was my particular question about that. There might be a quick answer to this, but I was also a little bit surprised to sort of see reference to mental health and learning, mental health and capacity, but learning disability and autism aren't mentioned at all, and it may be that you're kind of bundling those things in a little bit, but within the safety huddles and within the sort of electronic boards you had, I just wondered whether those were being used also to talk about things like sensory needs, communication, needs of patients who might have particular needs related to autism or learning disability. Also, my colleagues have already fabulously asked about feedback, which is normally my line, but just a really sort of specific thing about that again, where are you getting feedback, are you trying to theme it against the outcomes that you're looking at? So sometimes there are unintended consequences of work, particularly when you're focused on risk and trying to sort of make sure that you're trying to meet certain measures, and in a very unintended way, patient experience can be adversely impacted. So for example, you've talked about falls. Is there a risk that in trying to reduce falls, patients are actually being able to get out of bed less or move around less and not having the experience that they themselves might want? And my final question is around transparency. So, you know, obviously this is a meeting which is open to the public, but most people probably aren't watching it. If I was a member of the public and I go onto your website, how would I know what actions are being taken to address the concerns? So clearly the report itself makes the local press, but I'm not sure that there's so much of information out there to sort of give the public about what action is being taken. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lucy. In terms of, do you want to start? The first question, I think, was about particularly equality and diversity in maternity. Could that be Andrea and Laura to start, and then there is a specific, new piece of work I'd want to reference as well, but...
We don't tend to publish data relating to our maternity outcome based upon ethnicity, although we know that certain ethnic groups do require more attention and more focus because the outcomes tend to be less good. That once there is a particular piece of work, like we had a thematic review of stimulus recently, we did actually look at ethnic minorities as a separate group, comparing the outcomes with the general population as well. We are interested and monitor the outcomes in our dashboards, we don't tend to separate.
So, yeah, we also have, obviously there's been three national reports that have been published recently about women's, non-white British women's experience of maternity services in England, and we're in the process, we're in the process of benchmarking our services against all the recommendations of the national report. We currently have a seconded role, which is called a cultural safety midwifery role at the Jessop Wing. This is something that I want to look at developing further, and I'm working with the national team and Wendy Adiola, who actually represents the quality and EDI agenda nationally, who's very keen to work with us on developing what this role can look like in the future for us. So our outcomes, obviously, there is a Yorkshire and the Humber dashboard, which has many, many quality metrics from all the units, all the providers in Yorkshire and the Humber that we benchmark ourselves against. But as Andrea's described, it isn't usually based around ethnicity, but we do know from our, obviously, embrace, you know, that if a non-white British woman is more likely to die, and is more likely for her baby to die or be harmed, so, you know, there is an absolute focus on really meeting the needs of our community here. So we are very aware of this piece of work.
And what Andrea and Laura probably won't know, because they've not seen it yet, we saw as an exec team just last week, our information services have developed a dashboard looking at inequalities and then triangulating it against some data. It's very early days, so the data we particularly saw was, for instance, attendances at accident emergency by age, by sex, by indices of deprivation and by ethnicity. And I know the next stage is they do want to look at maternity and maternity data. It's just about whether we can manipulate the outcomes against those characteristics. So it is something that we are focused on as an organisation. It's early days and we're just working through what that will mean, but for instance, we looked at do not attend, people who didn't come to outpatient appointments, that might tell us that we might need to do something different, we might need to go to the patients rather than expect them to come to us if we're getting high rates in certain populations. So, yeah, it's certainly something that we are focused on.
Could I, could I?
Yeah.
Make this really quick, but so the continuity of carer agenda for maternity services identifies that outcomes for mothers and babies who are non-white British, if they are part of the continuity of carer and they have continuity, they experience better outcomes. So whilst currently, because of our workforce challenges, we haven't rolled out continuity. We plan to do this at the end of 2023, 24, and we'll be concentrating in the first instance of the areas of highest deprivation, which are S4, S5 for us, because that's where the concentration of our non-white British women and families are, so that we can really make a difference to outcomes.
And linking to your question about elderly and autism, I'll move on to that. Of course, two things, I want to say, the dashboard that Chris referenced actually has, is looking, one of our quality objectives this year is around learning disability, as I'm sure you know, and the dashboard is trying to look at how good that data is. We suspect it's not as good as it could be, but we're using that. The safety huddles, which talk about mental health needs, is not limited to, sorry, includes learning difficulties and autism as mental health needs in the round. We can always do better, we know that, but we're absolutely trying to get better data so that we can then work out. And we've just agreed this week, in fact, funding for two learning disability nurses as well, to do some specific work on learning disability in the trust, which I think will also help.
I'll move us on, just mindful of trying to be quite quick. The theming of feedback, we do theme feedback, we do try and, each piece of feedback, whether it's through the Friends and Family Test or through complaints or indeed compliments, we do try and theme and we do get themes. You're not to be surprised, one of the top themes at the moment is people waiting for care, and we know that, we know there's a backlog of care, so it's not a surprise. Sometimes we do get surprises. You're absolutely right about unintended consequences, we watch those carefully. Wards do have safety dashboards which have a number of metrics on, and it is interesting to watch them. So for instance, you could reduce your falls rate and see your pressure also rates go up, so they can see them both together. So we do try and do that, but it's a very fair point. And then the last question, I think, was transparency. Sandy, are you okay to take that one?
Yes. Very briefly, obviously, we have our public board papers, so you'll see in there details around maternity, the CQC action plan, the out and about visits that we describe, we have feedback from all of those visits, so that's in our public board papers. I guess, sharing that with you today, I am very mindful of the accessibility of those papers and how we may make that sort of communication more accessible, and that's something I'm very happy to take back.
That's really brief, I can back on that, yeah. I think absolutely it's in public board papers, but in the same way that people won't be watching this meeting, they're very unlikely to be reading those board papers, so I think there's, you know, some really important work to be done on that in terms of letting the public know what's happening.
Thanks very much. I've just got a couple of questions myself. I just wanted to comment, it is really reassuring that this whole CQC process exists and the checks and balances are there, but without wanting to seem too sort of negative, a lot of the measures that are being brought in from these action points, and it's a lot of action points, might seem to the layperson to be things that should have been there already, and I just wonder if you can describe on a very sort of, you know, basic level, what kind of factors lead, can lead to a trust, I'm not going to just point the finger here, a trust or a service within a trust falling from... within a trust falling from outstanding to inadequate in such a relatively short space of time. How does that happen and how are we confident that it's not going to happen again?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, specifically, I suppose, that's maternity. So I probably will focus the answer there. So I think for the past probably 10 years now, maternity has been the focus of a lot of work, a lot of initiatives. Laura's already described some things like, you know, how do we change the model of midwifery to something called continuity of carer, plans for that improvement, plans for that attain, which is babies born who are fundamentally healthy but then end up in neonatal units because of avoidable factors. There's lots of different things. And the maternity service in particular was working on all of those areas and making progress. It took quite a lot of work. It's improvement work. There's a lot of face-to-face training and all this work was ongoing. And then the pandemic struck. And I think the thing to remember about the pandemic largely was in March 2020, quite a lot of healthcare stopped. There was hardly any GP appointments. Our inpatient, our general inpatients fell incredibly. We had lots of empty beds. We didn't do any outpatient work. And even in accident emergency, we saw a reduction of down to almost 30% of patients. But the exception to all of that was maternity. So maternity couldn't stop. It had to keep going and it had to keep going, but redesign its pathways in flight. So over the period from then through, through over the next two years, there was a constant amount of reworking, changing, operational oversight, management of staff absence. And unfortunately, that, I think that disrupted quite a lot of the improvement work that was ongoing. Certainly, it made it much harder for meetings to take place and any of the training. Having said that, we had ourselves identified a cluster of incidents of note, which occurred in the autumn of 2020. And we were working with the team then, looking at these, these incidents and what we should do about them at the point of the CQC inspection. So I suppose, you know, we had a tumultuous event which disrupted both maternity and other services. I think your next question might reasonably be how the trust fared. I think the CQC, if they were here, would say they focused their inspections on areas they were concerned about. So unsurprisingly, lots of other trusts have seen their ratings fall and change. There's been a particular change in maternity ratings and lots of maternity units have seen their ratings fall. And there's a specific strand of work within the CQC now probably to inspect all maternity units and there may be further changes there. So that's what I'd say. In terms of going forwards, I think we have learnt a lot from this experience. I think in particular, the value of the quality support team going out there and regularly reviewing what's happening, I think is something that we will be mindful of when we come out of this immediate action plan stage and think about how we take that forwards. And plus the normal governance that we had in place but was somewhat disrupted.
Thanks. Just a bit further to that, you said you had identified some, a sort of cluster of incidents. And so I'm wondering what, we talked a little bit already today about mechanisms for sort of hands-on staff reporting safety concerns and so on upwards to management. But what, what measures are there in place for management to report upwards and actually seek help before something becomes dire?
So I think, so how to answer that one? I think the, the reporting of incidences is done by all levels of staff. And we monitor those for themes as Chris has signified. And I think clearly what we have is regular meetings, Chris does with the, with the nurse directors, the heads of each of the departments will go through, particularly with a lot of the work we've talked about, the measures and monitoring of quality measures in those areas. So for example, you may pick up incidents in certain areas and they will have a conversation directly with him about what's going on. So there's, there's the monitoring on the individual patient basis, there's a cluster of those which gather and then will be picked up in the regular monitoring of that ward area or that clinical department through conversations with the matrons, through the nurse director or the more junior staff, through the more senior staff and then through to, to, to the, to Chris or myself. So we do have a number of mechanisms of picking up concerns escalated through the lower to the higher levels. And when we get themed incidents, then we'll, we'll pick those up and investigate further.
So can you just, just explain how, how you go up the levels, as it were? So I think the general, layperson's understanding would be you've got your trust and services within the trust, and then you've got some layers of management now at a regional level. And then you've got NHS England.
Yeah.
And then you've got the Secretary of State. And, you know, that's the chain upwards. How far up do you go when you perceive that something's getting into difficulties?
So within the trust, just to start there first, each, we're, the trust is managed by 27 directorates. They each have a management team. Each of those directorates is stratified according to what we think might be going on with them into our performance management framework. And depending where they are in the performance management framework, they will be met with every quarter or every month and have the opportunity to flag issues up for help and support. So for instance, at the moment, the maternity service, because of where we are, are in what we call level three. And the maternity improvement board in effect is the monthly meeting we have with that team and ourselves as executives, where they can say, we're really struggling with, as, you know, we might want some help. You know, can you do something about the cleaning standards or something else? They've tried to take it forwards. In terms of us as a trust, we meet regularly with colleagues in the ICB. Jennifer and myself have access to our regional chief nurse, medical director. There's a regional director that the chief executive can speak to and they themselves have links with the regional, sorry, the national equivalent. So, so it could go up that way. There are occasions when we collaborate. There's an incident that's happening within the region at the moment. There's a meeting about that on Monday that's been called by the regional chief nurse. So these things can go up, but it depends at what level they are, as you say.
Okay, thanks. I'm just gonna, I'm not going to spend any more time asking for questions to be answered, but just to mention to Alexis and Danny that one thing I think we're probably quite interested in is how, how your framework interacts with everything else. And I guess we may want to revisit that in the future and hear more about how that's been working. So thanks for bringing that today as well. And thank you to all our panel members for giving up your time and answering all our questions with such patience. Thank you. We're just going to bring in our representatives from the Sheffield Health and Social Care Foundation Trust for our next item. Welcome. Thanks for coming today and attending the scrutiny subcommittee. We're on agenda item eight now, which is a report, an update from the Sheffield Health and Social Care Foundation Trust on their CQC improvements. So thanks for coming today. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and then we'll hear your report. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Beverly Murphy. I'm the Director of Nursing Professions and Operations. And I'm here today in the stead of Jan Dederich, our CEO, who is on leave.
And I'm Mike Hunter, Medical Director at Sheffield Health and Social Care.
Thank you. Please go ahead with your report and then we'll take some questions from members afterwards.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to take us through this brief presentation, which is really an update since we were last with you this time last year. A bit of background, people will be aware that in 2020, following inspection by the CQC, we received an inadequate rating and were placed in, was placed in what at the time was referred to as special measures. This time last year, we came back to tell you good news of progress, which is that following a further CQC inspection in May 2021, which was published in August of last year, our overall rating improved from inadequate to requires improvement. And this is why that improvement took place, is because across those five CQC domains, two that previously had been rated as inadequate in relation to safety and being well led, improved to requires improvement, good for caring and requires improvement overall as of this time last year. So the update since September 2021 is that we were inspected again at the end of 2021 with an inspection focused particularly on our acute wards for adults of working age and our psychiatric intensive care unit. At that time, this was a group of services that remained with an inadequate rating. It's back, okay. When the CQC inspected, they found, and this was captured in their report published in February 2022, that things had improved. The service, that service line was rated at that point as requires improvement overall, a step in the right direction from inadequate. They commented on a number of improvements, for example, how well the teams were working together as multidisciplinary teams, improved safeguarding practice and improved significant improvements in our ward environments. Related to this positive step in the right direction, we actually formally exited the enhanced support programme from NHS EI in June of this year. But it wasn't just the work that we were doing in that group of wards and services. It was the, the background, or if you like, the foundations that we built for improvements that I think were important. I won't read the slides out, but just to comment on a few things that the CQC has, have observed while we've been on this improvement trajectory. They've been doing significantly better in relation to safeguarding procedures, better evidence that our service users and patients are involved in their care planning and determining their treatment. And in fact, the general comment that overall our organisational governance has significantly improved over this period of time. So how, how do we know that this is real and not just apparent? And we do a number of things to keep an eye on how sustained these improvements are and what the differences for our service users and patients are. I won't go through all of these, but I'll say the key principle here really is about the layers that are in play. So there's what we're doing to, you know, on a day-to-day basis, operationally and as executive directors, there's what our board is doing, there's what the wider system is doing. So that, that means the system in Sheffield, but also the system in South Yorkshire and beyond and into the regional system of the NHS. And of course, there's the view of the regulator as well, which is another sort of line of defence, if you like, in terms of the objective appraisal of the services. And, and we say this with, although, you know, presenting steps in the right direction and, you know, really pleased and proud that we've been able to make these changes which benefit our service users, we say that with, you know, a degree of humility, because we know that there's more to do. And again, without reading the slides out, we have to further develop our staffing models with recruitment of substantive and permanent staff and then encourage people to really flourish in the way that they develop within their teams. We've made loads of progress with our buildings and estates, but we know that there's more to do and our plans are ambitious for really good inpatient and beyond facilities for people who need that kind of care in Sheffield. And I'll mention a specific, especially because we're sitting next door, but one to Alexis, is that we, you know, we're doing a lot of work in the space of developing the learning disability offer in Sheffield, particularly the community offer with a focus on really accessible, appropriately intensive, integrated and flexible services, not, not alone, but as a partner in the wider system. So I think I'll leave it at that, if that's okay, and hand over to, hand over to the committee for questions.
Thank you very much. And just to mention that we are asking for an update on the CAMHS inspection at a later point during this year. So what we're focusing on here is what you've mentioned already. Open this up to members' questions. councillor Hampshire.
Hello. Hi there.
Hi.
What do you think's the likelihood of reaching job vacancies to zero? It sounds very ambitious.
We're currently at nine percent across the organisation. We know that we've increased our headcount across the year. We also recognise that we've got hotspots that are much more difficult to fill. And we have to consider whether or not we need to take some different steps to attract people in the way that some of our neighbours have. So I am not confident that we will get to 0% because in an organisation like the NHS, there's always a degree of churn. And, and of course, we want people to be progressing, to be moving on, to working across the NHS as a whole. Nine percent as a vacancy rate in the NHS is actually relatively healthy. So where we need to focus is our hotspots to reduce those vacancies down to 10% or lower.
I'd just like to ask a follow-up question on that, actually. That's a very interesting question that's raised. And nine percent does sound quite good, maybe. But what effect does that nine percent have on staff, on other staff in the departments? So, you know, what, what might be the impact on, say, late shifts? Or are any of those nine percent at a consultant level? Just break it down a little bit for us.
Yes, absolutely. So the impact, we track very closely on a day-to-day basis. From a strategic and statutory level, we have a responsibility to report against very specific standards. So on a day-to-day basis, on a monthly basis, on a six-monthly basis, an annual basis, we track what's happening with, with our planned staffing against actually the staffing who are on duty. On a shift-by-shift basis, we are looking at the impact on the people in our care. So whether or not people have the leave away from inpatient wards, whether or not people have care coordinators that are consistent, and whether or not managers are spending more time looking for staff than they are attending to other, other duties and tasks, which actually could have a far more substantive and sustainable impact on, on how we deliver care. So are we worried about particular staff groups? Absolutely. In our inpatient acute services, there's four wards there. We have a higher turnover of registered nurses. And the impact on the registered nurses and the leaders who stay in that service, of course, is it does impact morale. So we are focused on that group. Mike, I wonder if you want to say something about medical recruitment strategy and also thinking about different roles in the future?
Yeah, thank, thank you. So we do carry some senior medical vacancies that we fill with locums while we're recruiting to them. People will be aware that the, the availability of senior doctors in the NHS against the roles that need filling, that's, that's challenging and that's a sort of a medium to long-term thing that needs to be worked through at the national level. But we're not without options. And the other thing that I'd say is that as, as how we are perceived improves, as we make these improvements, it's easier to bring people in from outside, to bring those kind of fresh lenses and perspectives. So for example, we've So, for example, we've recently recruited a senior doctor who previously worked at divisional medical director level in Birmingham to be our clinical director and consultant psychiatrist to clinically lead our transformation in our learning disability services, which is one of the areas that obviously we're very concerned about. And he joined us because of a commitment really to sort of lean in and make improvements where they were needed most. When I say we're not without options, that's because the fact that doctors are sometimes thin on the ground and bear in mind that the gap between when a doctor chooses to train in a particular specialty and when they come out the other end as a sort of fully finished consultant, that's a long gap, so doing workforce planning on that basis is hard. But the options we have are to look at alternatives to medics in those sorts of roles. So, I won't get into all the detail, but for example, people who are receiving hospital care under the Mental Health Act need a role called a responsible clinician in overall directing and working with them overall in relation to their care. Historically, that's been a role that could only be fulfilled by medics, but more recently, the door has opened for us to appoint non-medical responsible clinicians, which is one of the things that we haven't achieved that yet, but that's one of our next steps of strategic developments. The other thing I'll say, at the kind of middle or if you like, trainee-doctor level, there's the option to recruit to novel roles like physician associates, which is a profession in its own right. And actually, we've been very successful in doing that. We're interviewing another seven this week, not just to be appointed in Sheffield Health and Social Care, but we're working as a lead to help our immediate neighbours appoint to those sorts of roles. And we've led the way nationally in the development of physicians' associates in mental health. I could go on and mention clinical associate psychologists, which is really a way of developing something akin to the clinical psychologist role, but more in an apprenticeship model rather than the historical way, which is through doing a research doctorate. And as far as I'm aware, that's the only profession where people need to do a research doctorate in order to pursue a particular career direction. I could mention advanced clinical practitioners, and I could mention all the other things that we're doing in relation to apprenticeships across the organisation. So, yeah, it's challenging, but we have options because we can look beyond the traditional.
Thank you. Yeah, that's encouraging. I'm looking for hands, councillor Oxley and then councillor Marmot.
Obviously, I'm relatively new in this committee, so I didn't see the previous report in terms of much more of the background in terms of where we are, where we are. Obviously, the impact of Covid everywhere from my last report would have had a significant impact on service delivery in Sheffield, but I suppose what I wanted to ask is two things. Are the conditions that we've got in Sheffield different to those conditions that similar services are finding in other places of the UK? Have you got the same pressures? And having to deal with those same pressures, you know, you mentioned in terms of a lot of the problems in terms of recruitment, is a national issue, it's not a Sheffield issue? And suppose the next question then is, if you were going to benchmark our services now, given that you've got the higher rating, but how would you benchmark our services and what more specifically do we need to do to improve?
Shall I make a start? So, I think the pressures that we've got are broadly similar. Recruitment is a national issue. During Covid, the acuity in our community, so people becoming very unwell and not being engaged with services in a meaningful way and presenting at crisis points in care, that was nationally similar. Broadly speaking, our performance, if you like, where we're seeing people has returned more or less to what it was. What I think is a little bit different in Sheffield is there has been a lack of investment in our estate, I would say, over a fairly lengthy historical period. So in the last two years, since we were rated as inadequate and the state of our buildings was seen as neither therapeutic nor safe, we've had to bring a lot of energy to improving those buildings. And although we have improved and we perhaps are currently on an acceptable line in terms of regulation, in terms of the buildings being therapeutic and aiding high-quality care, there's an awful long way to go. So if we think about things like, yes, we have managed to remove dormitories, who would ever want to be in a dormitory with somebody that you might not know, more than likely don't know? But actually, we still don't have things like en suite accommodation for everybody. And if you think about the vulnerabilities of the people that we care for, so we are working at Place in Sheffield with our partners and up into South Yorkshire in the ICB and in fact nationally, looking for support, capital support to improve our buildings. We will not be able to improve our buildings without that capital support. And of course, the benchmark of what's acceptable and safe, we don't expect that to remain static, so we absolutely must have support with that. I think that in recent years, we've also worked across Sheffield to look at whether or not the models of care are what they need to be. And we know that we have got work to do in a way that other organisations have gotten on the front foot, so we need to be much, much more working with our partners, with the third sector, with community groups to ensure that we've got good inclusion, our services are accessible. And I would say that in the last two years, our focus on needing to, from a regulatory point of view, and all the comments I've just made about buildings, we perhaps haven't addressed that at the pace that we would want to. It's absolutely on our agenda, we're moving on that, but having good community models that meet people's needs are a priority for us. Our benchmarks, we have a range of benchmarking data that's available to us. We meet our performance targets broadly speaking. Most mental health services have missed or they're performing at a sub-target level nationally because of the impacts of Covid, that's recovering. Our IAT services, we see very, very strong performance. We know that for people who use substance misuse services, drug and alcohol services, we know that it's been a very tough time for those people across our communities and we know we've got more work to do in that area. We're working very closely with Alexis and our local authority services, but broadly speaking, we are slowly recovering. I would of course say, wouldn't I, that we would be looking for more investment in mental health services. If we look at the percentage of the health spend into acute and community services and what proportion of that makes its way into mental health services, the benchmark is very poor. We're no different to many services nationally, but that does have an impact on the people of Sheffield.
Thank you. Councillor Marmot, you think next?
Thank you. Thank you, and I think you've answered some of the points that I was going to make in relation to localised community services and preventative care within the service. I think the thing that I found most refreshing was hearing how you have a sense of humility about the process. I was here last year when you gave the report and have seen sort of the progress that you've made, although it's gradual, there is improvement that's happening there, which is good. But the level of need is increasing, and I think you mentioned there that, you know, funding isn't enough. How are we going to balance sort of the journey of improvement with an ever-increasing level of need and the lack of resources there to address that? And then just coming on to staffing, we mentioned this earlier with our previous speakers in terms of churn and what that means for patients. I have members of my family who use the service and we have different mental health support workers who constantly change, and for the individual, it's challenging to remember who the person is that they're meant to be speaking to. There is a sense of responsibility for family members to be engaged in the process, and if you're not engaged in the process, it's very difficult to remember or to support the individual that needs that support. So I think my question is for people who are actively engaged and know how to use the service, it perhaps isn't as difficult. So if I'm supporting my brother through the structure, it's easy to navigate. For many people, it's not easy to navigate and it's not easy to find who to speak to when there is that churn of staff. So I think it's good that there is the ambitious target of job vacancies to zero. I think there probably needs to be something in there about how we ensure not just the retention, but sort of the focused support with individuals and patients to ensure that there is that continuity of care with individuals as well. And then just on the final point, community care, you mentioned this in terms of localised services, and I think you touched on the fact that more needs to be done with community groups. What kinds of work is happening there? Are you working with FAS, are you working with local organisations within areas, or is it just GP surgery? So what specific work is happening there?
Sorry, thank you. Can I link the first and the last together? So we're improving, but against a background of greater need, so how do you square that? And how are we working with local communities? Because I think the answer to the third is also the answer to the first. So my experience of working in mental health and psychiatry in particular is that quite often, we're helping people with the consequences of things that have happened, if you like, kind of upstream in their lives. The consequences of poverty, of homelessness, of discrimination, of disempowered communities. And we know as a mental health service, we are mainly a secondary specialist mental health provider, and we know that we can't on our own solve the socio-economic problems of the world, but what we can do is lean into the communities that we serve. So I'll give an example, which is our primary care mental health work that we do in partnership with Primary Care Sheffield, which is the organisation that in effect represents general practices, primary care more broadly in Sheffield. Working in partnership with them and Sheffield Mind as a lead VCSE provider, then drawing in other VCSE, smaller and even more sort of localised VCSE organisations. And what we're trying to do there is to put what might have in the past has been thought of as more of a specialist offer that was maybe a bit harder to reach, that had to go past that thing called referral from your GP and then into that world of waiting lists and things like that. We're trying to put that closer to people's homes, communities and families. And we're currently doing that in six of the 15 primary care networks in Sheffield and we'll build all 15 this year. And the benefit is about being able to get in earlier and getting, I think also, getting in in a way that is more grounded in the reality of people's day-to-day life. So whilst retaining that specialist thing that we have to do as well, it's finding the partnerships where we can make those kind of more ordinary interventions to help people. And I'll give a specific example. When I went down to the Furvale Community Hub to meet with Gulmas Hussain, and I walked into a room and somebody came up to me and said, they've got, I don't know if anyone's been down there, but it's fantastic, they've got a building, they've got all this stuff going on in there, one of your teams is there, public health there, and a man came up to me and he said, I work for the primary care mental health team and this is what we're off, worked for one of the VCSE organisations within the primary care mental health team and said, and this is what we do. And I said, oh, I'm the senior responsible officer for that project, so I'm really glad to hear from you. But I think it's the knitting of those things together. What we can't do is improve against the trajectory of greater need just by doing more of the same. It's about thinking, about doing things differently, different partnerships, and my personal view is being much more interested in the reality of people's day-to-day lives and building services in a way that really reflect that.
And to support that, we have appointed an engagement lead who actually is somebody who works at Flourish, because what we recognise is as an NHS organisation, we don't have the best skill set in engaging out into our communities. And it's Theresa Clayton who we've appointed to support us with that work. And you know what Theresa is helping us understand with those various community groups is that there's a mistrust of our services and Theresa's able to, foreign with us, broker the conversations to understand what's keeping that mistrust going. So there's a very active network of work that we're taking really very seriously. And to support that, we have also been fortunate to be supported by NHS Improvement to implement the Patient Care Erase Equality Framework to further support that work. We are, you mentioned, I think, this is my way of putting it, the difficulty in navigating services if you don't know how to navigate the services. And as well as the work in primary mental health care, we also have to transform our recovery services and our crisis services. So we have been fortunate to work with what was formerly known as the CCG to put quite an investment into the crisis services, but there's a lot more work to do with our recovery services. Whilst we've started to transform those services, what's required of the care programme approach, so the way that we used to work with people with key workers to help them navigate across the service, the requirements have changed quite significantly and actually, that's going to give us a little bit more wiggle room or elbow room to apply standards in a slightly different way. Perhaps appoint people into roles that are non-traditional roles, again, drawing much, much more on the third sector, so that the care is localised and appropriate culturally sensitive care in a way that perhaps applying the CPA the way we have done in the last couple of decades hasn't allowed. That's a piece of work that's started. There's a lot more to do and I think we'll start seeing some of the benefits of that January 23. And we're trying very much to engage in conversations with other organisations who've done this earlier and are already seeing the outcomes of that, such as East London and actually Humber have done an awful lot of work in this area. Just to say something about the resources of course, because working at Place South Yorkshire in a collaborative and then up to the ICB, the ICB-ICS is set up absolutely to look at how do we work it as partners that's much more effective, more cost-effective and testing out if we're doing something or if we're providing a care pathway across providers, across the partnership, actually if it doesn't have a good outcome for the people in our communities, then why are we doing it at all? So I think that the ICS-ICB will help us think about the way that we work as organisations and will hold us to account for working together as partners in quite a different way.
Thanks very much. Alexis just has a slight look about her as though she might want to chip in.
I was just listening to the journey, I was actually part of the board, the quality board, and it's actually been a lovely journey to watch, actually, and it's probably helpful to say that, and I think that's probably the smile, it's actually just a lovely journey to watch. And actually, what might go saying resonate with me about that connection to communities, that connection- communities, that connection and seeing the outcome that you're doing, because that's exactly what we're doing in adults, exactly the same sort of process. And I think that, you know, and I'm saying this very impromptu, is that it's really been lovely to watch the development of the Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust over the last, you know, eight, 20 months. And really, I came into a post at a time of when the result just happened and there's quite a lot going on in the system. And actually, what I've really seen over the last, you know, 18 months is really this, is actually how much we're more focused on prevention, quality and outcomes collectively together, less about crisis and less about crisis response. And really, it's been, that in itself is such a huge difference to make in terms of how we're going forward. And just to kind of echo Beverly's kind of point here about funding, there is a point, you know, that Beverly is quite right about the funding that goes into NHS, you know, mental health services and how that, you know, is kind of what that means in from the point of view of population outcomes. And it's something that I think is a really quite a helpful point that's probably needed today. So hopefully that's quite helpful and very impromptu. But it has been lovely to work alongside the trust actually over this last 18 months and actually to see the change and developments. And I suppose on the September's Adult Social Care Committee, we've got a report coming around to our market shaping statement for mental health. And equally, we're reporting on the kind of progress in terms of kind of our own mental health delivery within adult social care. And very much a lot of the work within that reflects the collaboration that's been happening with colleagues in the trust, but also that recommission of services towards, you know, that kind of prevention and that focus within communities. So it's quite a good time to be around. And, you know, I could really see that over the next, you know, two to five years, this will continue to hopefully see positive impacts on people and communities, because ultimately that's what matters. And for anybody who's watching that today, is what I'd want to see is absolutely that impact on people and carers, because I know that is what people tell me all the time that you want to see is a difference. So anyway, but thank you to the team here.
Thanks. Yeah, that is encouraging. Thank you. I just want to ask one more question. I have seen councillor Oxley's hand about just bearing in mind that we've heard from Sheffield Teaching Hospitals as well today, and they're at a different point in their process from where you are, much further down the line now with enacting your improvement plan or action plan from the C Q C. So how sustained and sustainable would you say these changes are? Just to offer us a bit of expectation on what we can hope to see from improvements in other parts of our NHS system. So do you feel that the changes you've made are fully sustainable? Or, you know, have they taken so much effort to put in place that then that effort can't be sustained?
I think there certainly was a period where we were, to kind of phrase, having to throw everything at it. And that is not sustainable. But we had to change the very real impacts on the people that we serve. However, we've taken a step back from that and we've put lots of time and effort and resources into developing our leaders. So we've got a collective approach to leadership across the organisation. So that rather than a top-down approach where you might have a board or an executive team guiding the organisation and the improvement, actually you have nearly 3,000 members of staff engaged in understanding the impact for service users. So engaging our workforce is, I would say, the key to sustainability with the changes, with the improvements that we've made and continued improvement, which is also essential. I will say again that we do need to continue to see investment into mental health services as a proportion for the overall spend. There are the statistics about the number of people who've been mentally unwell, challenged, however you want to put it, at any one time in the community, lots of those people will be using S T H services. So the more we work as partners and understand that it's the population health that is important and the outcomes for people in Sheffield, then the more sustainable the improvements will be in the longer term.
Thank you. Councillor Oxley, you wanted to come back in?
Yes, that last discussion just struck a nerve. And I'm going off piece a little bit here. In terms of, as a father with a daughter with some, at times quite severe, mental health issues, I always felt that both me as our immediate carer and also the family surrounding me had very little information in terms of how we could support those people with mental illnesses or with anxiety or in times of crisis. And I always felt that trying to find that information invariably wasn't there. And obviously, you know, we were talking about what you're trying to do in terms of caring and community and whatever. But I suppose it's just to repeat the call that I spoke about a couple of years ago in a different committee, that what we need is to provide that information to their local carers, to their parents, to partners and whatever, in terms of what they can do to help you in supporting those children, those adults, once they go back into that family situation. I thought that is an aspect that we could put some resource into and get some immediate impact, because it's the families that are coping with those situations on the day-to-day basis.
I mean, really to agree with all that you've said. And yeah, we have a carer's strategy. What you've outlined there are exactly the things that we're working to further develop. I think, to go back to the principle of humility, I think I would accept that our engagement work with service users and patients has been at a more developed stage than our engagement work with carers and families. But I think let's put that out there as, you know, not as developed and needing more energy and focus from us, but captured in, you know, captured in a strategy with a very clear direction of travel, which is very closely aligned to what you've just spelled out.
Just to add to that, so that's part of the work again that Theresa's supporting us with, to work into the communities and to understand people's experience so we can respond to it, kind of in the trajectory that Mike has outlined. I think I would also say, because we're with respected councillors, is that for people to be well and to remain well, we've got to focus on healthy communities. So people do have to have housing, they do have to have access to employment or in the very least, meaningful occupation. People need to, there's research papers about the health benefits that people feel if they feel they're making a contribution to their community. So it's absolutely about how we work with carers, but the picture is much more broad than that.
Thank you. Yeah, Alexis, go ahead.
Could we add into that is there's a couple of key developments that are coming to the Adult Social Care Policy Committee over this next year. As one of them is the unpaid carer strategy and delivery plan for the city. And that's about setting out how we, after we recommissioned care support services over the last year, the impact that is having, but also a very much joined-up approach with kind of health and kind of wider partners about how we support unpaid carers in the city. Because ultimately, one in nine people, and that's the way the stats goes, will be an unpaid carer at some point in time in their life. And so that's coming to December's committee for approval. And that's been developed as part of a partnership with colleagues right across the city. And then secondly, in terms of information and advice, there's a report coming to the committee in November, setting out a new and improved information and advice offer for the city. Because one of the things that people absolutely told me a lot when I came into post was, we don't know how to find information. And so one of my assistant directors, Tim, who actually works closely with the trust, has actually developed and worked with colleagues to develop a new and improved information and advice offer that one of the key things that we'll see this as a springboard for that joint approach across the city. And that's for me, has been about delivering and responding to what people are telling us. And, you know, in that kind of way and kind of going forward. And then the third key thing for me is around about being around the wider offer, as Beverly says, to support the recovery journey. One of the key things that we look at through our own joint commission arrangements and our joint arrangements is actually how do we ensure we've got the appropriate supports in place that do two things? Number one, support recovery. But also, secondly, coming back to a point that was made earlier on, was actually how we ensure people of a diversity of backgrounds could access support and that we are not increasing inequalities by the types of supports that we have. So that's been one of the things that's been fundamentally key to me within all this, is that we do have that kind of key range of kind of sports, of diversity of communities. And I'm just going to say, we do have an adult social care kind of summit on Friday. And one of the key things that we're going to be doing is very much using that as an ongoing conversation to talk about, because we are a commissioner across a range of services and supports, is how do we support the very fundamentals that Beverly was talking about earlier on and really take that forward? Because that ultimately should help what you're experiencing, is that we have better ser-, we have services that ultimately improve the quality and outcomes for people of the city, because that's absolutely what matters. You know, so hopefully that's helpful.
Okay. Right, I'm going to just thank you for your time today then. It's been extremely informative. Thanks for bringing the report and answering the questions in such a full and informative way. So thank you very much and good luck as you carry on the work that you're doing. We're on to item nine on the agenda, which is the work programme. So we'll just wait for Emily to come back to let us know what's happening with that. So items on the work programme, Emily, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so you've got the subcommittee's work programme in front of you. So that's kind of pulled together some of the legacy issues, if you like, from the Healthy Communities and Adult Social Care Scrutiny Committee last year, and some of the things that have come up from your June meeting. So the next meeting of the committee, subcommittee scheduled for November, and that, the key focus for that, I think, will be the consultation results on the GP hubs. So that's what you've got for the next meeting. There was a suggestion from Alexis at the beginning of the meeting that we include an item on the C Q C assurance framework at an appropriate point. So we'll add that in. And this is just an opportunity for members of the subcommittee to raise any other issues they'd like to see included. And the report asks you to agree the work programme. It's rather complicated wording, isn't it? Agree the work programme is set out in appendix one, consider any further additions or adjustments to the work programme and any other things you'd like to investigate for putting in the work programme. Over to you, Emily. I'm happy to take any questions on existing things there if they're not clear.
Any questions or anything that anyone would like to add? Lucy.
Just a few thoughts about things that could be added to the list. It's hard to settle on some, isn't it? But I'm just really conscious that the primary care hubs item, sort of embedded in that, you've got a lot of conversations about primary care across the city as a major concern to a lot of people. It's probably the number one thing that we hear about all the time at Health Watch. So I do wonder whether or not at some point there's a scope for having a more, a broader conversation about primary care. And again, following on from the mental health conversation, there were some significant changes happening, particularly in relation to community, mental health teams in the city, linked to the sort of primary care work that they did mention. But I wondered whether or not it might be an idea to delve a little bit more into some of that community-focused mental health work, which wasn't so much the focus of the C Q C inspection, but is really important to people. Slightly, sorry, slightly linked to that as well, and I don't know whether it would be, it would probably be too much to try and put those two things together. But there's a major change happening, which Alexis mentioned, whereby the social work function for people with mental illness is moving from the trust to the council in terms of that function to be discharged. And I wonder whether or not it's probably too soon to delve into that, but whether or not that might be appropriate to look at. And the last thing I was going to say, which is again, something of a major concern to the public is obviously waiting lists and backlog, particularly in elective care and whether we wanted to have a particular look at that. And within that, there's a particular concern around, I guess, inequalities. There's a lot of evidence to sort of suggest that waiting lists and looking at waiting lists in terms of time sort of compounds inequalities, because people from disadvantaged communities and ethnic minorities tend to wait longer for care or access care later. So yeah, if you look, yeah, the sort of inequalities aspect of that, I think, would be interesting to consider.
Thanks very much, Lucy.
I'll stop.
Yeah, no, thanks. They're all really good things. I think we could possibly look at bringing the community-focused mental health, if we want to ask more about that, we might bring that alongside the CAMHS report that we've asked for. Try and treat those both in the same meeting, perhaps.
Chair. I mean, yeah, it's just the timetabling of it, because we've got, some of the reports are coming to the main policy committee. And just off the top of my head, I can't remember the timing when those reports are expected. So I think it's something that Emily needs to, you know, just sort out, I think, the timing of when they come, really.
If you're all happy as a subcommittee for us to kind of add this list into the work programme, I'll kind of go away and talk to the relevant organisations and officers about how we best schedule it and how we can best make the use of everybody's time, if you're happy with that.
Yep, thank you. And councillor Homsor.
So I'm not a regular member of this committee, so I don't know how far the remit goes. But I was thinking, in connection with, with buildings and the impact, so several new buildings are being built in the care trust and within the council in various health and social care settings. And the impact of the energy crisis on those buildings and trying to save money by putting in various systems, such as increased insulation into those buildings when they're actually being designed. So I don't know whether that could be an aspect of what could be dealt with. Maybe there could be a discussion on that at some point about, because if you don't deal with it at a kind of building stage or a retrofitting stage, then you may be undercutting a lot of the good work that's been done by the various trusts. So it's just, it's a very, it's a broad thought, but actually it may be something that has significant impact down the line.
I think we can look at whether that comes under this committee or under planning and strategy and resources within the committee system. I think we can go away and look at where that might best fall within the system, do you think?
Yeah, it might be one for the I C B. I imagine that they will have an estate strategy and that that might cover some of that. But if, yeah, if you leave it with me to go and investigate, I'll report back on where it would best sit and how we could best approach it.
We'll certainly consider it in the context of the GP hubs, as that's a NHS and council co-sponsored project.
That's right, within that, your kind of remit, isn't it, I think, possibly? I almost brought it up with the social trust just now as well, because they were talking about lots of new buildings.
Okay, thank you. So on the basis of those suggestions that have been put forward and that we'll consider those into the work programme, are we happy to agree the work programme as set out with those considerations? All happy? Good. On the bells, as Emily says. Thank you very much, committee, and I hope that's been informative for everyone and for the general public as well to hear those questions answered today. Thank you very much.